Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Russell, Debra, if you could please call the roll.
Absolutely, Mayor. Mayor Breakus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Allbritton.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands when one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you all for being here. We are honored and appreciated that we can have Representative Robin Bartman here this evening. Robin, before you say a few words, let me just say that as a town, we are, thank you so very much for all that you do for our town. You are an exceptional representative of our values and what we, you know, what we attempt to prove and to show and to do in the future. So, thank you for all your tireless work to get that done, and sincerely, it's very much appreciated. Thank you. There should be a mic.
I can just put it in. That way, I don't touch it and everyone. We have alcohol behind us. We've got, we got it. We're covered. I know, he has all the sanitation. Hi, everyone. Can you all hear me with the mask?
Yep, or you're welcome to take it off.
I'll just take it off when I talk. Hi, everyone. I am so happy to be here. I know I haven't been able to get to a meeting because I've been in committee weeks and your meetings have been falling on my committee weeks. But I'm here now, so I'm very excited. I have a couple of things I want to do. One, I want to thank the mayor and Russell and Marty, Russell Munez, I call you by your first names, I'm sorry, and your city manager for meeting with me. We went over the appropriations. So, we have five appropriations for the town of Southwest Ranches, so we're going to go into session. And hopefully, I'm going to be bringing home some bacon for the town of Southwest Ranches again. Also, I have exciting news. City Manager Burns attended our delegation meeting this week, and our local bill pertaining to fireworks went through the delegation. It was awesome. We had 100% support. What's also great about this bill is we took the language from the bill in Wellington, so it's already passed the Senate and the House. It just now will have the name Southwest Ranches. So, we're really, really excited about that. I'm going to introduce, I have a fellows program, and what that is, is I take local high school students and college students who live in my district, and they get to participate in the legislative process. It's really an exciting program. They're amazing. They did a whole social media analysis. They research bills. They, we really just try to give them every experience so they know what they want to do. So, tonight, I have had two seniors who are supposed to be here because they're, they're the official assignments to Southwest Ranches, but they have not completed some sort of college application they need to get done. So, we gave them a pass. But that is, the two students are Akasa Patel and Jordan Herkero. They're the, some of the first fellows, and I met them when they invited me to speak at the Political Youth Club. And all of my fellows got very involved last year when the state legislature tried to change Bright Futures. And any parent out there understands what they were trying to do. Your child works really hard to get a high SAT/ACT score. You know, works all through high school to get 250 service hours, a great GPA, and then they said, "You're not going to be able to take advantage unless you major in what we want you to major in." And I can't find any 17-year-old who knows what they want to do with their life. They think they know. I mean, my daughter went to school four years to be a lawyer. She's a second-grade teacher now. Don't know how that happened, but it's whatever makes you happy. I tell her that all the time, and I say, "You can always go back to law school." But since, since I'm a teacher, what can I say? You know, I'm very excited for her. So, my fellows had a lot to do with organizing, getting the student voice out, and now we're going to fight the newest battle with Bright Futures. Is last year, they took the book money out of Bright Futures. Books are costing kids anywhere between $1,200 and $1,800 a semester. And you can't share books because the professors, they write a new version every semester, so they are always making money. But then the kids can't, you know, "Here's my book from last semester." So, that's on our political agenda as well. So, there, Akasa is president of DECA, and Jordan, the reason I thought she was great for Southwest Ranches is she started her own charity called Hearts for Horses. Couldn't think of a better fit. And now, I'm going to introduce Jorge Altuna. Come on up, Jorge. Jorge is an 11th grader, another student in my fellows program. He's part of the student government at the county level, an elected officer. He served as a messenger last legislative session, worked on the floor. He did amazing things. So, you're going to see his face at this meeting, and when you see him, any messages you have, any residents who are in the audience, if you need help, he'll have his shirt on, and you can find him because I'm back and forth to Tallahassee so frequently, I can't always be here. But everyone in Southwest Ranches knows how to again, touch with me, 954-668-3662. That's my personal cell. If you call me, it will ring, I promise. 954-668-3662. Again, if you're having business licensing issues, unemployment issues, just call us and we can get you to the right people. Also, I, I serve on the Veterans Affairs Committee, and I really wanted to share this important information with the community because we have a lot of veterans in Southwest Ranches. And, you know, they, veterans have our backs, and we need to have theirs when they come home. And we have not done such a great job in doing that. And many of them are suffering from PTSD. So, there's something new called the Governor's Challenge, and what that is, is about the community educating themselves on how to help veterans to recognize the signs. And you can go to savefloridavets.org. SaveFloridaVets.org. And I did post that on your Southwest Ranches Facebook page. Also, what vets need to know is there's a Veterans Safety Planning App. It's called PTSD Coach. And that's really important. You can download it. It's created by the Office of Veteran Affairs. To get you the support you need, you can go to your phone. We passed a bill last legislative session. Veterans and their families can also call the 211 hotline for any kind of assistance. The reason we need to get this out is because although we do not have the death-by-suicide data for our veterans for this year, we know it's going to be dramatic because we know based on the number of calls to the helpline because of COVID and the isolation they suffered. So, we're waiting for that data, but the helpline, the numbers went through the roof, which you could view as a good thing because they knew where to go for help. But we don't know what those numbers are going to look like for the death by suicide, and we have to be there for our veterans. So, it's one of my favorite committees to serve on, and I wanted to pass on that information. So, with that, I'll just open it up to any questions. I don't want to take a lot of time. Oh, I do have to tell you just to say Miami-Dade County Commission just sent me a resolution supporting House Bill 49, which is the bill I filed with Senator Anna Maria Rodriguez. It's a bipartisan bill for our police officers and first responders.
Awesome.
Our correctional officers, probation officers, and our 911 operators cannot file a claim in workman's comp for PTSD. So, you can imagine what a correctional officer sees on a daily basis, or what a 911 operator goes through. They are exempted from that provision of the bill. The other thing I did was I worked with University of South Florida, which has the first program for PTSD and first responders. They're creating it. And so, in the bill that was supposed to mandate PTSD training but has no specifics, we have brought in that language to include what the necessary components are for our first responders. We know how important that is. We had a death by suicide in Hollywood just this week, and over the summer, a firefighter, a death by suicide in the firehouse. So, we have got to be there for our first responders. We've got to be there for our veterans. We have to get rid of the stigma that surrounds mental health and be for, there for the people who are always there for us. I cannot say enough about this town council. I love you guys. I love this town. I want to be part of the judging for the light contest again. I'm very excited about that. And just whatever anyone in this community needs, I'm here. And if you have a student who's interested in being a fellow, please contact me so they can get involved in the legislative process. They'll earn community service hours, and with that, I'll open it up for any questions. And I'll put this back on so I don't get in trouble. Do you want to say something? No, he's good. Oh, and the guy that everyone also gets on the phone, my legislative aide, my right-hand man, Nick Hessing. Everyone loves him as well.
Yep, fantastic.
Okay, any other questions? Are we good?
Robin, is the program just open to high school students, or is it for college students as well?
Both. As a matter of fact, we have some students who are at, are at FSU, and because they've, they've, they're, last year, we couldn't get anyone into the Capitol. I'm surprised that we were able to get Jorge in, but they let the messengers in. But we have them coming to the office and working in the office and during session and during committee week. So, anyone, so you can share my number and send it out, and I really want kids to get this opportunity. It's, it's important for them to get involved. It's really important for them to get involved at the local level as well. Like, I was speaking to a group of students, and I'm like, "It's not just the state." I said, "The people who make the most important decisions that impact your life, that's your town council, that's your city council. They're the closest to the people." Oh, and good news, but bad news. So, remember the bill that took away your home rule where people can't report by, safety violations or other issues, and it has to be anonymous?
Right.
So, there was an unintended consequence, I found out, there, and the home business bill as well. The unintended consequence of the home business bill is someone applied for a business license to sell guns and ammunition out of their home in like a residential community in Lauderdale Lakes. But because they have limited, you know, they tied your hands. You can open up any kind of business now you want, anywhere. They're going to have to go back and revisit that. So, we were on with the League of Cities, and that was a big issue. So, it'll be interesting. So, hopefully, that bill and the bill for the reporting will come back, and we'll be able to get that language in that makes more sense. So, it's just sad that it took something like this to, to bring it to light, and hopefully, we'll have glitch bills for the things that we didn't agree with last session.
Right, perfect.
Okay, you guys?
Just one other quick comment. We'll see you at Broward Days.
Oh, yeah.
I think we're all going.
I am so excited you're all coming to Broward Days. I want to go out to lunch or dinner with all of you. You can park in my office, leave your suitcases. I'm so excited to have my cities up. What I also want to do is be strategic with Nelson. I want to get you before my committee chairs. I'm going to give you a list of committee, I want you to meet with me, but I'm already on your side. I'm going to get you the names of the people who are on the committees who are voting on our bills, and I want them to meet you because you are Southwest Ranches. And I, I think I did a really good job speaking about Southwest Ranches, and I was able to say how special you are and how people live here for generations and how you want to, you know, maintain your rural community. And I did mention that there are quail eggs and chicken eggs for sale. That was good for all the business owners here in Southwest Ranches. I did put that in. But, but I want them to see who you are and why this is important to your town. And along the way, we'll also have all the great pictures of the drainage issues and all of that, and I want you to meet Chair Josie Tomcaw. She's the one who helped us with a lot of the water appropriations, and I, I told her all about this town. She is actually a cow rancher. So, she like loved to hear about you guys, so I want her to meet you all.
Have to wear our hats.
Yeah, wear your hats. We're good.
One, one last question.
Uh-huh.
I don't know.
It's okay, it's all right.
Got any. Is there any momentum this year on the public adjusters? I mean, our personal insurance on our house has gone up three grand this year. My wife is in that industry, and all fingers point to the craziness going on out there.
So, this is what, I did not support that bill that last year because they said, "This bill is the panacea. It's going to fix everything with your insurance."
Yeah.
However, we had an amendment on the floor, my caucus, that said if there are any cost savings, they have to be passed on to the homeowners. That was rejected, which, well, I thought the reason why we were passing that bill was for you and everyone else who can't afford their homeowners. So, it's going to go back again. There's still issues with citizens, so we're going to have a new version. I, myself, the people I talked to are the advocates for the homeowners, not the insurance companies. So, it's, it's going to be very difficult because what's happening is global warming, climate change. So, you have insurance companies that are here in Florida and national insurance companies, but all of them have their own insurance companies, which are called reinsurance companies, and those are usually worldwide. And those reinsurance companies, they're, the fires in Australia, the freeze in Houston, Texas, the wildfires, they're covering all of that. So, what happens is the reinsurance companies raise their rates and pass those rates on to the insurance companies. And so, it's, I don't know, for the future, I don't, I'm going to tell you now, I don't have the answer to how that big problem is going to be fixed. I do make sure I educate myself, and I get with people who do. You should also know that pretty soon, I'll be introducing another bill regarding inland and coastal flooding, which directly impacts West Broward and the rise of water and the ability to drain. So, we're going to hold a press conference with that, with Broward County, when we get that going. But that, people talk about sea level rise and everything going on in the east. We need to pay attention to what's going on in the west.
Let us know if you need our support.
I definitely will. I will. I will have you guys because we, we live out here. We are on the edge of the Everglades.
Yeah.
And we, we have to be able to drain our water. We have to make sure that, you know, the pipes are, are built so they're above the water so they can drain. So, there are so many issues. So, I'll be releasing that soon. I don't want to steal the thunder until we do it. I don't know when we're doing it, like in a week or two, week or two, and I'll do it. But we're definitely focusing on inland and coastal flooding again for this community because I, I plan to live here till my last day. And I, and I know people in Southwest Ranches live here for generations. They're not leaving either. So, so thank you all very much. I love your town. Oh, Gary.
Yeah, just a quick question. Thank you very much. Would you like us to draw up a resolution regarding the PSD?
If, yeah, actually, we can send you the resolution. We'll send you the one that Miami-Dade did, and I sent one to our county commission. And more importantly, I think it'll be great to have you when we talk about the flooding because we are Western Broward County, and I'll have you guys there as well. I love working with this town. You are wonderful. Your staff is wonderful, and thank you to all the residents for having the confidence in me to do this job. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, bye-bye.
Thanks. All right. So, I think many of you, perhaps all of you are aware that we did a community survey not too long ago, and we have gotten those results back, and Andy has, has done, and his staff has done a lot of work to kind of look at that, consolidate it, and kind of get the messages out of that. So, Andy, I'll turn it over to you to kind of report where, where that, what it showed us.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as you all know, we surveyed the community earlier this year. We got the results back. We tabulated it. That's been put in the form of a report, which you've received previously. You all got a copy of it again this evening, and I think we have some copies out for members of the public who want it. I did want to go through it and just touch on some of the highlights from it, some things that were surprising, some things that really weren't, some things that reaffirmed what we expected. But really, the question is, and, and I'm going to apologize to you all in advance because this stuff brings out my energy. It really does. I, this stuff gets me all excited, so I'll, I'll try to temper that down as I go through it. But the first question is, why, why do we survey the community? And really, for us, it gives us a clear picture where we've been and where we need to go. That's really the bottom line. So, from a management standpoint, we strive to make our management decisions based on data. Without that crucial information, we're, we're guessing. We might make a good guess. We might make a bad guess. But it, but it's important to have that data so that that drives our decisions to do the best we can, certainly in support of the council and to benefit the residents. So, the, the data is critically important. The 2021 survey yielded unfortunately a very low response rate, as you can see from the slide that's there. That is a concern to us, and it's something that, that we need to revisit before we survey the community in the future. The more data we get in, the more accurate it is, the more valuable it is. That said, even with the lesser response, there, there was some very good data that, that did come back, and, and that's part of what I want to share with you. Slide. Just give you a, a basic look at some of the demographics that we, that came back with this survey. And, and I'll remind you once again, keep in mind that this is the small number of, of returned data, returned surveys that we got. So, the caution to you all, because you'll see things in here you may like, recognize it may not be truly representative. And so, what we see here doesn't fully represent the community. So, there, there are perspectives beyond that. Obviously, we want to use this to guide us, but just a, a caution to remember that, that this isn't gold-plated, okay? Slide. Give you a sense of where we are. This was based on, at the time we surveyed and this data was compiled, it was based on the 2010 census data. So, just keep in mind, some of that information may shift a little bit. But as you can see from this, it's, the survey data did not necessarily match up well with our census data. So, it's just one thing for us to be aware of going forward, and we make sure we, we increase our outreach where we need to, and I'm going to touch on that again later. Slide. So, there, the top three reasons residents choose to live in Southwest Ranches. Maintaining the rural lifestyle, 96%. Not a surprise to any of you. I won't get into the politics of it, but last year, three of you ran on that. It resonates with the community. It was very clear that from the, from the response from the public, I'll say it's not surprising. It's exactly what we expected. While it was a small sample size, perhaps, and this is a caution, that the people we hear from may be the people we're already familiar with and we're already in touch with. So, the rural lifestyle is overwhelmingly important to our residents, and I want to certainly be aware of that. Just to caution you that there could be a little, a little bit of a bubble. There are some people out there who may have other perspectives. Certainly not anything that would topple 96%. I, I think if we surveyed every single resident town, had 100% response, I think that, that would be a, that would remain a very high number. Slide. So, this is a resident's impression of contacts with the town of Southwest Ranches. The good news is the public finds us, the, the slide to the left. The public finds us, you see the green, very professional, and that's something we strive for every single day. The next one deals with answering questions, and, and the third is overall satisfaction. You can see the, the green dips a little bit. We're professional, but, but sometimes the satisfaction falls just a little bit, and, and I would say to you that that may, in some cases, be due to residents may not always receive the answer they want. We do our best to give them the correct answer. It's not always, as I said, what, what they might expect. Slide. Resident satisfaction with town services. As you can see from this, there was an increase in building, and I would attribute that. We've got two permit clerks that have been in the building now for a year or so who have been really outstanding. I think our customer service on Building Department has much better than it was in the past, and I think that's reflective here of the increase in satisfaction there. Code did have a little bit of a drop-off. I'd, I think that might be to expanding in some cases maybe our, our proactive efforts, you know, for things such as dark skies. Again, it's a small sample size, so it's not really, you know, there's, there's some concern whether that's disproportionate or not, but it is something for us to look at. And, and I'll just, I'll just say the drop-off in sanitation services is not a surprise to any of you. Slide. Residents, resident ratings of town of Southwest Ranches services. Once again, there's no surprises here. Police and fire are typically the top two in every single municipality. Fire always seems to edge out police because I think if people have had an issue with the police, they've gotten a speeding ticket, their satisfaction might not be as quite, quite as high as fire. But our public here thinks very high, highly of police and fire in both cases, and they've been well-served, and it, and it's reflected by the satisfaction level. The bottom three, which is the Building Department, Planning and Zoning, and Code Enforcement, I'll, I'll say that's also not a surprise. And, and the reason I say that is those departments all have regulatory authority and responsibilities. So, in some cases, they have to tell people no. One knows the right answer, but it may not be the answer that people want to hear. And so, the takeaway from, for me there is not necessarily to excuse that, but we need to recognize how we work on delivering that message. Sometimes, you know, you need to say no, but, but there's ways to do it to, to try to maintain that, those satisfaction levels. So, that's something we certainly want to be aware of and build on. Opportunities for improvement. This split almost in the middle on residents' amount of access to the town's decision-making process. We had 53% that are satisfied, very satisfied or satisfied, and, and I'll say to you again, and, you know, repeat this theme of the bubble. We regularly hear from our very engaged residents. We have a lot of residents who are very engaged in things in this town. They're not shy. They share their thoughts with you, whether it's a council meeting, whether it's advisory board meetings, whether it's HOA meetings. And, and I, I think we do a really good job there, but the opportunity for improvement, conversely, is the 47% who we're not reaching for whatever reason. And so, if we're not hearing from almost 50% of the population, that, as I said, is an opportunity for us to improve. So, we as a staff need to rethink how we use our newsletter, our website, social media, message boards, the HOAs, our outreach. And, and, you know, I'd say we need to rethink that to allow for both cultural and generational changes in our community. So, we need to recognize that, and, and we need to adjust for that. Quality of life, very clear. People like it here, and they feel safe. Slide. Changes in the neighborhood in the past year. I found this very interesting because we have a list of positive comments that people mentioned. We have a list of negative comments. So, what, what I find interesting is you see some of the same things on both lists. That says to me that, that people's satisfaction levels here or their response is very specific to their experience, their neighborhood, their street. Slide. From a strategic planning standpoint, we asked the residents where they believe we should focus in the future, and you see that rural lifestyle is right up there again with a, just a, a huge number. The next two things, cut through traffic and speeding, and then maintaining roads. So, and the focus on the rural lifestyle actually increased by 12 points since the previous survey. So, that was, that was pretty incredible. And what I'll say on this is that this council has clearly and repeatedly expressed the commitment to the rural lifestyle. I think you guys are solidly aware of that and have, and have done a good job in communicating that to the, to the community. Maintaining roads is our TIS Door project. We've got two separate items on the agenda for tonight. So, we're very aware of that. We're working forward on that. And the public safety issues, that's, that's something that's really arisen over the last year or so. I know the councilmember Allbritton has spoken about that, and, you know, that, that's an item that we're going to put under the spotlight in the new year with the upcoming Public Safety Committee. So, it's, it's something that's clearly important to our residents, and I look forward to, to that. Other opportunities for improvement, this is just, I, I just kind of gave you a list of some of the things that, that residents had brought up. What I found interesting is there were two things on here that might be viewed as a conflict with what we perceive to be the rural lifestyle. And that's people who mentioned streetlights, and that was on multiple surveys. That was mentioned, and sidewalks. So, I'm not, certainly not saying that you need to do that. I'm just saying to you that, that some of our people, as important as the rural lifestyle is, they don't see that necessarily as an intrusion into the rural lifestyle. So, it's just something for you, just to be aware of going forward. We asked people what we could do to improve the living conditions in town, and there you go. You see the same themes repeated. Reduce the speeding, cut through traffic, which we're going to work on with the Public Safety Committee, fix the problems with the roadways, which we're trying to do through TIS Door, improve drainage, which is something that has been a priority in this town for longer than I've been here and will continue to, to do so. We've made a lot of inroads over the last, you know, 10 years or so, and we'll continue to do that. And there you go. Maintain that rural lifestyle. If you had any doubts, that's, that's what the public wants to see. And other than that, that's really the highlights from, from the survey that I wanted to share with you and share with members of the public. You know, we're going to use this going forward as, as a staff for our planning and how, you know, we strategize and what we do. But I wanted to, you know, kind of share that with you. I know it was very important to share the results back with the public as well. So, that's why I had wanted to do it in this format tonight. And certainly, any, any discussion on or any questions you have, certainly, we're, I and the rest of the staff are certainly ready for. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Andy. And I really appreciate the effort that the staff went through to get this survey out here and into our hands so that we can kind of reaffirm what we know, but also learn some new things about what we need to be focusing on and we need to be doing. The important thing about this is that it's not, you know, just something we think about tonight and then set aside, but that we continue to use this information in a positive and real way. I have a few comments. I don't know if any, anybody else has a few comments or questions for Andy before?
Sure.
Okay.
Go for it.
All right. A couple of things that I wanted to say was, you know, it was encouraging to me to see how that 96% for the rural lifestyle is there. I mean, that just, that's what we're about, and we need to, we need to remember that. We need, you know, it's easy to get distracted with other things. It's easy to get distracted with other events and things, but at the end of the day, that's why the residents put us up here. And I think we're very fortunate. I feel very fortunate to work with the council that I've got, because I feel like every one of us is focused on that. But it's important for us to always remember to be focused on that. That's kind of our guiding light to help make all the other decisions. Couple of other things that come to mind as I look at it. I saw the, you know, the code issue as well. I think we've got a great code team here. Julio and his staff does a great job. It's a really tough job. I've always said, I think it's the toughest job in town, and I think we're fortunate to have the folks that we do, we have, doing that job. I think an element of perhaps what's happening there with that number going up is tied in with the new procedure that we have with Waste Pro and the reporting of that debris and that whole process. I think it was a good, it was worth trying, and it made a lot of sense to me when we started it. But I think there's been some side effects and ramifications, both for us and the vendor, frankly, where I'm not sure it really worked out in the long run. And so I think that, as we go into the next contract, I think that's something we need to look at again, because, you know, and it was certainly worth trying. I'm not throwing any stones. I thought it was a great idea at the time. And, but I think it's something we need to revisit. And I think that's an element of what we see going on in code, is really, really the fallout from that change in policy. And the last thing I wanted to mention was, I am, I can't express just how much, how fortunate we are to have the Davie Police and the Davie Fire serving our town. They are awesome individuals. They are dedicated professionals. They serve our town, you know, unless you read Davie on there, you see Southwest Ranches all over, and the way that they're dedicated and the way they serve us. So, I'm glad that that came out in the survey. I'm glad that the residents see what we see. And I just want to take a moment, just thank you all for what you do, because you do an amazing job. Thank you. Anybody else for some?
Yeah, just a few. I was, once again, on the ninety-six percent of the maintaining rural lifestyle. I'm just kind of a little bit puzzled about the four percent. I mean, I'm like, wait a minute, where's?
They'll talk to their neighbors, and in about six months, we'll have it up to a hundred percent.
All right. But I think every one of us up here have worked very hard to promote our equestrian lifestyle and preserving our large, open spaces. This is, we chose to live here, and this is all reflected in these survey results and what each of us have been doing up here. And I think that that is reflected in the survey results, and Mr. Mayor, your leadership is the guiding light for us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Andy, just a question or two for you. I mean, I've been through these before, producing them, not to the community, but in the business world, and typically, we then follow it up with changes to our strategic plan, and then funding requirements wherever necessary. We want to support you on the direction you take to improve some of these, quote example. And really, to get that other four percent. But, you know, I don't know what your game plan is yet to pursue these, and then when you think you might be able to have something in front of us that we can talk about.
Actually, the next step will be to schedule a strategic planning retreat, perhaps a Saturday afternoon with all of you, because I want to go back and revisit the mission, vision, values, those kinds of things, where we are. Let's, based on the survey results, I don't anticipate a whole lot changing. I really don't. But I think it's an important exercise for us to go through, to reaffirm that, to revisit that, to adjust or tweak where may be necessary, and continue to use those as our guidelines. For example, on our staff memos, on your agenda items, we'll cite the items in the staff, the public may not realize that, but within the staff memos on agenda items, it cites the specific goals in the strategic plan that those items align with. So we will, we may revisit some of those goals, but we will continue to use that process. So when we evaluate projects, it's got to match up. It's got to be consistent with our plan. We've got to know where we're going, and everything that we do as an organization needs to align with that. I think we've been good with that. I think we just have an opportunity to be a little bit better.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll just throw in quick two cents, and that is, you know, I think the residents think we're headed in the right direction. And, you know, working with our state representative up north to, you know, to work on the fireworks problem that we have and various other problems. And I spoke to a lot of residents here in the last few days, walking around where I live, and they actually more sought me out than the other way around. And, you know, they're very concerned about all the items listed here, the speeding, the traffic, the trash pickup, that's at the top. And then we work our way down in the conversation, because they've got me cornered, for lack of a better way. And I'm fine with that. I tell them, that's what I'm here for. You know, I have to hear from you. So, and this list really reflects it. So I think we're on the right track. Standing there.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was one of those hundred and ten, and I'm proud to say I turned mine in. And I was really thinking that there'd be more surveys coming in. But still, the hundred and ten, I got a feeling that come from the Flamingo Road all the way up to US 27. I think people in all four districts responded, and it wasn't just one particular area. There's some areas don't have cut-throughs. Some people don't have speeding in their areas. Those that did responded, and those that had other issues responded. So I think it's a great survey. Really a good survey.
Great. Thank you, Jim. I'm going to, we don't normally do this, but I'm going to open it up to the public. I don't know if there's any public response to the survey and things that we've heard. Anybody? If there is? Okay, that's fine. All right, great. But Andy, thank you for all the work on that and the staff on that, and to the council. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment.
Good evening, Mayor. We have two speakers tonight. The rules of public comment are in the agenda. We have Michelle McBride, followed by Mary Ann Allen, and then no further speakers.
Thank you. Michelle? That's fine. Awesome.
So just to confirm, Michelle, you pass? Yes. You can speak to it. Mayor, do you want me just to address that issue?
Yeah.
Yeah. Before you walked in, Representative Robin Bartman was here. And what she stated publicly was that the town's law, which is a special act of the legislature to do what Wellington did two years ago, a year ago, is going to Tallahassee for, hopefully, to be approved. What that law would do was be, it would allow the town to make the decision whether or not it would allow fireworks or not allow fireworks. Right now, we have no choice. We have to abide by state law. So she presented it, saying that it passed the Broward delegation the other day. Andy was there to present, and now it's up to Tallahassee to make the final determination and to be signed by the governor. And we're hopeful it will be approved.
Perfect. Thank you, Keith.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Two things I want to add. It did pass the Broward delegation unanimously, and it's the exact same language that was approved last year by Wellington. Just substitute Southwest Ranches for Wellington. So, you know, you don't know until you get there, but we feel real good about getting through. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. All right. Mary Ann?
Mary Ann Allen, 12701 Mustang Trail. First, I want to thank each and every one of you. You've been so devoted. You come to so many meetings and committee meetings. And that's a lot of time away from family, and we just want you to know how much we really appreciate. And I think this is the best council we've had in years, if I might say so, because you're listening. You're actually listening to our comments. You're giving us extra time instead of cutting us off, because when you cut people off, you're, in effect, muzzling public input and public comment. There's never a lot of people here that come anyway, that are going to take up your whole night commenting. So if you'd be, you know, generous as you have been and let people get their comments out, that would be great. Last night, a lot of you attended our homeowners meeting in Sunshine Ranches. Thank you very much. We had great reports from all of you. And regarding the garbage, I attended the meeting when you had the big educational lecture from the garbage people. There is no more room for garbage, and they're running out of places to put garbage. And yet, development keeps happening, more and more. The more people you bring in, the higher the density, the more needs for public services and garbage, and we're running out of room. Sustainable development. I never thought I'd like that term, because it was Agenda 21 and Agenda 30 from the United Nations. I understand what they mean by sustainable development now. Victoria Park, I have a friend. Their traffic is so congested, and they are now going to build, I don't know, a thirty-story apartment complex. The people have said, no, no, no. We have one street. We're already hours into traffic. The commissioners did not listen. They let the developers pursue the plan. And I want to say thank you, because so many commissions of so many towns, they don't listen to their residents. And you have an opportunity in the next several years to determine where our town is going to go. Are we going to let private communities build within our community, like we have in the past, where they're separate from us? They bring in higher-density populations that will drain our resources. So I think the moratorium you're taking now for the next several months on plating and development is going to give you a good chance to decide where are we going to go in the future. You know, they don't make places like the ranches anymore. We've got the last land, and the pressure is on. We want to bring this in. We want another school. We want another football field. And we're the last land, so let's try to save it. Thank you so much again for your efforts.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you. All right. Seeing no further public comment. Public comment is closed. Any board reports this evening? Seeing no board reports. Councilmember comments?
I'll go last.
Go last. All right. All right.
I'm really not going to make any comments tonight, because the items that I want to discuss are on the agenda. So, that's my speak, my talk for tonight.
Good. David?
David Kozenski, District Four. Just a real brief thanks. Thanks to everybody who came out tonight. It's good to see you. I know if people that are coming off of I-75 or coming from Griffin East happen to see the big pile of dirt at the southeast corner with 75 and Griffin, that is not going to be a park-and-ride. All right? Just rest assured that it's not going to be a park-and-ride. You would have heard about it, if it would be. And great news with Representative Bartman introducing that fireworks bill. It's really good news for us. That was an idea that I believe Sunshine Ranches brought forward to the town. And I want to also thank Davie Police Department for their traffic enforcement. I'm getting a lot of thanks, saying you guys are doing a great job. So pat yourselves on the back. Thank you. That wraps me up.
Excellent. Thank you, David. Jim?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and council staff, residents. Last night, at the Homeowners Association meeting for Sunshine Ranches, I mentioned to some of the residents there, and I'll say it to here, I see some from country estates and to others, those little green signs that I was able to get out to ask the traffic to slow down come up missing in my area over there in District Three. They took them off 164th and 166th. They were taken sometime, I guess, oh, maybe Monday night, Tuesday night or so. I drove up and down the block. They're all missing. I do have a few more left. So if you happen to live there and your sign's missing, just give me a call. But I just don't understand why somebody come along and take those signs. And if it's because they got a traffic ticket for speeding, then I don't feel so bad. It was well worth it, you know? Well, well worth it to me. The survey that Andy just spoke about with the cut-through traffic and the speeding, I told you that the committee, I'm so much looking forward to working with Andy on that, starting in January, with the citizens. We're going to get the citizens from each district in one at large to come in and give us ideas as to what we can do to stop some of the problems that's going through in the neighborhoods. And I'm really looking forward to that, and that'll help with the survey that you were talking about, some of the things we can address in the future with that. I've been talking to Kevin Hart with the South Broward Drainage District. Green Meadows is undergoing major drainage projects right now. They're in the second phase. Will probably be the first district that's completely finished in the next three to four years. And the neighbors are upset, because they're digging up their driveways, they're digging up their streets. But my concern is the canal that it's going to, and that's between 164th and 166. That's a major canal that's going to take all that water from Dykes, 162nd, 163rd, 164th, and put it in that canal. Right now, that canal is a little overgrown. There's trees growing in the canal. The banks have fallen off in the canal. So I met with Kevin, and I have some letters for the residents to sign. I'll be knocking on doors, one by one. And it's just to get their permission to come into their yard and clean the canal. It's at absolutely no cost to them, so I don't see why they'd be upset about that. If you walk down to the canal tonight, by my house, the mosquito's down there about this big, and they're going, come on. It's, the grass is growing up that high over the canal, and that's where they're breeding. So the flow of the water with all the extra water coming will be a concern for myself, because I live on 166, and probably the people on 164th also. So I will be going around and, you know, getting those things signed. You heard Ms. Bartman say that she'd like to be a judge for the Christmas lights that are coming up. If you're going to do lights, fill out that form. Town has it, and Santa Claus will be around this year. Somebody had volunteered to be Santa Claus this year, so we'll see what happens with that. Maybe he can do that. So, you know, the beard's put up, and the suit's ready, so he's ready. So with that, have a good evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jim. I have just a few items. First, I just wanted to let everybody know, we signed a proclamation, proclamation, thank you, I can say that word, related to Diwali. Did I say that right?
Diwali.
Diwali, thank you. I apologize. This is not something I'm overly familiar with, obviously. But I thought it was important, because the Hindus and the Sikhs have been such tremendous partners for us in our town, going above and beyond what's ever been asked to them, and just really helped us in time after time, over and over. And so this is a special, November 4th is, this is Diwali, and celebrates with lights. They light up their homes, just like others do in Christmas. It's similar kind of a celebration. So if you have friends, Sikhs, Hindus, please wish them a very special Diwali, as I will attempt to do, when I really get familiar with the word, and so I'm learning. So, but super folks, we wish them just a wonderful, wonderful Diwali. A reminder that we have the COVID testing station right next door to Town Hall, right, like, right here. And it is available. It is, you don't need an appointment. You can just drive up. They can do it right while you stay in your car. They have the booster shots now are available, and so it's super convenient if you're traveling. I traveled outside the country in August, and it was a major deal trying to get tested and get the results back in time for the airline and the country. Aruba to let me in. And so it was really, it always has to be in a short period of time. These folks right here will test you and give you the results the next day, which is awesome. So just a reminder that they're there. They're doing a great job. I wanted to mention that, you know, we, our parks are really important to us. We use a lot of, a lot of folks use the parks. I know I really enjoy the parks. And one of the topics that the Parks Board is discussing right now is the rules that are associated with each of the parks. And so if you have an interest in that, if you have some input in that, some concerns, some things that maybe you saw going on or not being allowed in the parks, those kinds of things, this is the time to have that discussion and provide that feedback so that we can make sure that the rules of the park and how we want them to be run is in tune with what the residents feel like it should be run that way. So I would encourage you to attend that, if you have an interest in that area. Our boards. I wanted to make a comment about our boards. One of the things that we One of the things that we do, whether it's here on the council or on each of the boards, is we are governed, I'm going to say loosely, by Robert's Rules of Order. And we've never, on the council, had a parliamentarian to tell us all the intricate ins and outs of it, and yet we use it to keep order and to speak on the topics, to be respectful of one another. And I believe that's, that's the key to how it is. I mean, like, like we said this earlier, Marianne, and I appreciate your kind words. But, you know, I, these, these lights here are to kind of be a guideline, but, you know, we, we break that all the time, you know, if there's, if there's words, you know, if there's comments that need to be said and, and we don't, the three minutes is not long enough. So that's breaking Robert's Rules of Order. But we do it all the time because it's important, it's the right way to run a meeting. So in some of our, our boards, it seems like Robert's Rules of Order has been taken, I think, too strictly. And, and I think that it is something that has not, when it's taken that strictly, it does not promote the interaction between board members. It actually limits the interaction between board members and the interaction of the public with the board. And so what I would like to do, what I'd like to propose for the council, and I don't think we need, I don't know if we need a vote or just a consensus on this, but I would like to be able to give the chairman of each of the boards the ability to, to waive Robert's Rules of Order in any particular issue so that they can run the meeting in a positive way. We're not, we're not sending all those, those chairmen through a, you know, a two-week class in Robert's Rules of Order. And so, and we don't expect them to know it down to the letter. We expect them to, to run the meetings in a respectful and responsible way. But I, I would like to give them more flexibility and more leniency in how they run the meetings, still using Robert's Rules of Order, but not being specifically limited to it. So I don't know, Keith may be have some thoughts on that, or Russell?
Yeah, the only thing I would say is the charter states that Robert's Rules of Order have to be followed unless the council adopts an alternative rules of order, and that applies for the boards too. So to do what you are looking to do is very easy, we just need to bring back an ordinance, basically enabling what you are suggesting.
But I don't, I don't want to move away from Robert's Rules of Order.
No, no, I understand, but...
All I want to do is just allow the chairman to have more flexibility in how they apply Robert's Rules of Order.
Yeah, and our, a simple ordinance would state that, it just protects you. It basically says, Robert's Rules of Order shall be followed unless the chair of the border committee or the commission deems that in a particular instance, the rule should be waived, or something similar to that, if that's what you're looking for.
I, I, I'm not looking for all of Robert's Rules of Order to be waived and tossed aside.
Understood.
What I'm looking for is having them have the ability to not worry about whether they, if somebody was on the prevailing side or the non-pervailing side and items like that when they come up with another item, whether it needs to be taken up in the next meeting or two meetings from then, based on, you know, nobody knows what those rules are. And, and it's, it's disruptive to the meeting. So I'm not looking, I'm looking for us to follow the Robert's Rules of Order in a more relaxed fashion.
And I can draft that for you and send it to you next week, and you can tweak it and bring it right before the council.
Okay. What's, what's the other feedback?
Yeah, just let me make a comment on that. I, I like what you're saying. I mean, I think sometimes it's used as a cudgel in an inappropriate way. But I, I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with just the chair making that decision. Maybe a vote needs to be taken so that the group agree, the committee agrees with whatever direction that the chair is looking to take.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to add more bureaucracy into the process.
Sub bureaucracy.
Adding, adding, well, then, I already see, I already see, I already see the, the discussion, you know? Is that, that, what you just did is not exactly along with Robert's Rules of Order. We need to take a vote on that and to see if we can, we can adjust in that way. And then there's going to be discussion whether, you know, may, maybe, maybe we need to drop the whole thing because I don't, I'm afraid that we're going to make it even more complex. I just want to give, we, the chairman is running the meeting. I want to give them the flexibility to run it right, that's all.
What if the chair is doing something that the, the board doesn't agree with?
Then I think they, then I think that they, we're going to need to choose a new chair. Right?
In one instance, I don't mean they're a bad chairperson. So we'll talk more about it, let's see what Keith drafts.
One, one of my concerns is in certain instances, rules provide a structure that, we'll say, could preserve legal action. And stepping outside of those rules, I mean, this may be an issue that need to be explored, could open up a board member being subject to litigation from what occurs subsequent to that. And that's just a concern that I have, just looking in a realm of possibilities, not a specific instance.
Mr. Mayor, I, I understand where you're going and I agree with, with some of what you're saying in terms of reasonability.
Yeah.
And I'm going to use the little red light here as a, as a, as an, you know, as an example, if somebody is trying to make a point and they need another minute, we allow that, okay? And, and from what I see, all the boards do the same, pretty much the same thing. They kind of follow our lead and stuff like that. Regarding the rules of procedure, I'm not an expert on Robert's Rules of Order and sometimes I have to think about, okay, does this make sense? You know, and then move from there. But I think to rewrite it, I'm not comfortable with that because, you know, I, there's some, there's, there's some areas where, yeah, we, we could probably use a little bit of rational, more rational thought, you know, or, or carry the conversation a little further as opposed to somebody just chopping it off or something to that effect. I would have to see the specifics, I would have to see specific examples to, to take it to the next, next step, this outside of Rob, Robert's Rules of Order, whether it's speaking, whether it's bringing back a, a motion. I was at the same meeting you were, so I, you know, I understand the concern. But I would like, I would like to see something a little more specific than just, you know, characterizes, do we need to put this aside? Because if we put it aside, who knows what, who knows what we're going to get after that? You know, what can of worms we're going to open? And I'm, I'm concerned more about that than I am, you know, what actually transpired at that one meeting that you're referring to right now.
Oh, I'm not referring to one meeting. There was, we did have a meeting that I was concerned about. But it's, it's a lot more than just one meeting. I wouldn't, I wouldn't make this kind of action with one meeting. But I don't know, it was an idea. I, I'm afraid that where we're going, we're going to make it more complex, that's the last thing I want to do. I'm not looking to rewrite Robert Rules of Order, that's the last thing I want to do. So I, I think I've got a sense that there, there's more concern for changes than there is concern about the way the, the meetings are being run today. I personally don't feel that way. I think that giving the chairman a little more flexibility to be able to run the meeting the way they, they, along Robert's Rules of Order without being called on it and, and being challenged on it repeatedly, I think, I think it's a better way to run the meeting. But I'm not going to, this is not, this is not a super important issue, I just thought it was something where we could make an improvement, a simple improvement and, and give it to the chairman. But I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make it, I'm afraid we're going to make it worse rather than better, and I don't want to do that.
Yeah, well, I'm also wondering too, if we can, if we can take specific areas of Robert's Rules of Order and just, and incorporate that somehow into the overall plan of each, of each committee that they, that they're aware of them, that you can bring back a motion for X, Y, Z, you can bring back this instance, that you can let, that what, what the, what the, the authority of the chairman really is according to Robert's, I don't think that everybody knows that.
I could chew chew.
Yeah, for lack of a better, thank you, that's exactly what I was thinking of, just a, a list of probably the 10 most common things that seem to happen to us, and this is how Robert Rules of Order applied to that. And I, I think we could, I think we could try that first, and if that don't work, then...
I, I think that, I think that will just create more debate about Robert's Rules of Order, which is what I want to get away from, you know?
Yeah, okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, yeah.
Now we got our list and this is...
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
I just thought it was a, an easy, simple fix too. But, but I, I get it, I get it, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to worry about that. All right, the last thing I wanted to touch on was Waste Pro. And really more than Waste Pro, garbage pickup, I've been, if you've been in a couple of the HOA meetings here recently, I've, I've made similar comments because I want to get the word out there that we are, you know, it's a town, we are moving, you know, from where we were four years ago when we signed the last contract to where we are today, the world of waste disposal has changed dramatically, not a little bit, but dramatically. You know, last time we signed a contract, China was buying all of the recyclable products and there was a market to sell it. And, and so that's why you collect it, because it would go somewhere. Before COVID, there was plenty of individuals out there to help pick up the garbage, to do the job, to do the work. That's not the case anymore. And so what are we seeing? We're seeing, you know, a lot more complaints related to garbage pickup, for bulk pickup, things like that. And, and we can get upset with Waste Pro, but the reality is, it doesn't matter whether it's Waste Pro or Waste Management or Coastal or Republic, none of those companies have the workers to fulfill their contracts. So what does that mean? What that means is that when contract renewal comes around, those companies are going to focus on the areas, the communities that are most profitable. They're going to take their resources and apply them to the communities where they make the most money, like any other business owner would do. And so we are not one of those areas. I hate to break it to you, but we are not one of those areas. It's a lot easier to empty a huge dumpster next to a condominium and get the, the fees for that huge condominium than it is to drive from house to house that are significantly separated here in the ranches. And so, so we are not one of the communities that is a, is at the top of the list where these companies want to do business. So where normally in the past, we have gone out and attempted to do bidding and, and try and, and get all the, you know, the different potential companies in there, this time around, we're going to have to look at it a little bit different, a little bit, I'm going to say a little bit smarter based on the, the environment and the landscape that we find ourselves in. And we're going to need to have some conversations with the residents, which is why I'm saying what I'm saying, because I want your feedback on this. I, I, we need to know what things are most important to you so that when we do this contract, we can do it right, we can focus on the things that are most important. Things like, you know, if we were to go to the containers that can be dumped automatically, then they don't need the second, the second individual on the truck, which could be a huge win for a contract. But we've kind of steered away from that in the past. If we were to perhaps, you know, reduce the number of bulk pickups but, but have the, the size unlimited, that would be easier on them and we'd still might be able to get rid of all the bulk we need to get rid of. If we, right now, we are paying extra for recycle, you know, above what we pay for waste because we're recycling it. But the reality is, is that when it leaves our community, all that goes into the same bin and all of it gets handled the same way. Recycle does not get recycled anymore. Like I said, there is no market for it. So why are we paying a premium for it? It doesn't make sense. And so then the question is, you know, recycling is really important, it's critical. But if it's all going to end up in the same place, do we really want to pay extra to do that? It just, that makes no sense. So it's those kinds of things that we need to talk through, we need to figure out, there's going to be some give and some take. At the end of the day, what we want to do is we want to get the best contract that we can get for our town to meet the needs of our town, knowing that there, and there's a high likelihood that the services that we see today will be different a year from now when we have the new contract. Our contract runs out the end of September of 2022. So Andy and the team is putting together the bid documents for this and, but we're early in the stage, we're probably going to put this out sometime in the spring. And so now is the time where I'd really like to get some feedback for those folks that have, have any thoughts, concerns, ideas on how to handle this, so. I see that look.
My turn?
What you got? Yeah, what you got? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank everybody for coming, as always. Few things, one, I just want to touch on what you just mentioned with our trash. Should we probably be in the mindset of scheduling a workshop before a meeting sometime in the, I want to say March, April, February, somewhere in there?
I would say maybe February, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
You know, like an hour before, like at 6 o'clock, announce it in newsletter numerous times, something like that, so we can get, get a chance for the residents to, you know, to tell us what they, what they think.
Right.
You know, I mean, we know, we already know, a lot of us know what they think now.
Yeah.
But, but we're looking for solutions.
Exactly.
You know, and then, so I wanted to, you know, I think we should be proactive in that. Just a few things, FYI stuff, Urgent Med, the mayor's already talked about, the Holiday Light Contest, Councilman Jim's already talked about. The DMV Flowmobile for November has been canceled, is, hopefully it'll be reinstated for December. The reason is unknown, I just know that it's canceled, so I want to mention that. The Parks Foundation is having a car show, they're bringing it back on the 4th, right, December, 4th of December, December, December. And it's from 10 to 4 p.m. and it's the, the big Chili Fest. And I guarantee you, it's, somebody up here is going to be in it and it's not me. So everybody will enjoy that. We also have the contest, design contest for the front entrance of Country Estates Park, which is due by the 15th of November. And let's see, I've checked all the boxes. Okay, and I've come to the last thing, the big thing. Been working on this now for about five to six weeks, you see everything up here on the monitors. Russell and Rod have been working on this very diligently. And what we've done is, at my prompting, and I'm the guinea pig, as I said weeks ago about this, was how a resident has to go about getting a Level 1 permit, which is free to them from the town. There's no cost, but there is a cost to Broward County, and it deals with wetland delineation, determination, however you want to phrase it. And the genesis, genesis of this, believe it or not, was Ms. Debbie Green, who's out here in the audience, when she was explaining what she had to go through, and I, and I thought back and I said, I, that was, I just felt like it was so, I don't want to use the word ridiculous, but it felt really crazy in my head, that, so I decided to take this task under, under my wing and try to actually do one. And so I actually applied for one with Russell and Rod's help to see where all the steps were. And as you can tell by this handout, there's a lot of pages here. And we're going to go through it, if you don't feel indulgent, Mayor, it's going to take about five to 10 minutes to do this, Russell's got this all teed up. And he'll provide some of the commentary and so will I, but he'll provide most of it. And so Russell, I'm going to turn it over to you and everybody can watch. This is for a Level 1 permit process in our town.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jablonsky. So basically what we tried to establish in this presentation is just the process of the Level 1 fill permit. So essentially, there's five overarching steps. The first step that needs to be determined is, do I even need a permit? That's the first question that we need, the applicant would need to ask themselves. Then, just in the overview step, if they do require a permit, they would need to obtain the wetland delineation as indicated by Councilmember Jablonsky. Once the delineation is received, they would then fill out the application here at the town, submit the application as step four, and then upon, upon approval of the fill permit, they can bring the material in. So that's basically the final step. So we're going to just walk through the process, so, next. So basically, obtaining a wetland delineation from Broward County, in order to do that, you can either visit the ePermits link on the town website, you can visit the broward.org/epermits, and these are links. This PowerPoint presentation is going to be available on our website at the conclusion of the meeting. Or they can also click on the... Or they can also click on the ePermits tutorial, uh, that's found on the town website, which, again, this will be a link that will take you there as well. So again, the first step, do you need a fill permit? So this page here may be a little, uh, a little difficult to read, but it's found in the fill packet, uh, fill permit packet that we have already established on the town website. If you go to the Public Works Department and look for development permits, you'll see the link for the fill permit packet. And this is one of the, uh, first pages of that packet. And it outlines, uh, the instances in which a fill permit is not required. So all of those highlighted sections are instances where you would not need a fill permit. I won't go into detail here for the sense of, uh, for the, you know, sake of time. But just, uh, you can see that there's a number of instances where you would not need a permit. The Level One covers, uh, and it goes up to different cubic yardage amounts. Yeah, thanks, Dan. I don't know if you can see that on the screen. Yeah, okay. So for up to two acres, uh, you can have up to 36 cubic yards, which is essentially two trucks. And then based on the lot size, you could increase that and have additional, uh, cubic yardage of fill being brought in. So the next, the, the step two is obtaining that wetland delineation as we indicated from Broward County. So this is the, the Broward.org portal. So the first step is, uh, is obviously creating a new account. So there's a link there that you would click on. Go ahead. Next. You would need to register as a new user unless you already have a, a login credential. So you would have to register. You click on the register button. Next. You would fill out all of the, uh, information that's requested, name and so on. Next. When you register, you will receive a confirmation email link. And within the body of that, uh, email, uh, there's a, there's a link there that you'll click on. Next. And it will, uh, allow you access to the ePermit system. So you click on the request access button. And afterward you would click on the sign in. Once you sign in to this, to the ePermit system, there's a, a bevy of different, um, ePermits that you can apply for through the county. But we're just speaking about the wetland delineation. So in this instance, you would select the, uh, wetland delineation and then proceed to permits. The next, uh, step would be, uh, submitting your application. So you would click on, uh, submit an application. On the dropdown menu, uh, you'll select wetland delineation and then click next. Then you'll, the, the list, a couple of different documents that you need to provide. And so you obviously want to read that list and confirm that you have those, uh, documents at the ready. The first is, um, is the, uh, just losing my thought here. I'm sorry, yeah, a location, a sketch or the survey of the location. And then the, the second is either a warranty deed or some kind of release indicating that you have permission to, uh, submit the wetland delineation request. So for the sketch, uh, we, you know, they suggest that you provide either a copy of your survey or an aerial obtained from the Broward County Property Appraisers website. And then that can be printed out, saved to you, or saved to your computer and then uploaded, uh, for the wetland delineation. Next. You can also, we created a, um, a release, a sample release, uh, that anyone can use. We used it, uh, we had a, a very, um, willing participant to serve as a guinea pig. I won't name names.
Me.
And, uh, we used this sample release and the county accepted it. So we could, uh, the applicant can either use this sample release or they can, uh, submit their warranty deed. Here they would, um, submit their application. They would have to fill out all of this information here, requesting the, um, the site name. Yeah, and, okay, so click on next. And then fill out all of the location information, basically that's requested, clicking on next. And then they would click add to add an applicant or a requester. And click next. Here, there's, uh, additional information that's requested. Basically, I'm not going to get into too much detail. If the requester is the applicant, um, if they're the main point of contact on here, they would select, uh, check that box that's requested there. If they're not the, uh, point of contact, then they can leave the box empty, proceed and click next. It's hard to see, so let me see. Uh, okay, so then if the, um, yeah, so if, if the contact person is, is different than the person that's submitting the request, then they would click add and add themselves and click on next. Here they will click on the upload of the application and all requisite documentation that's requested and submit that. Here they would add the additional files that might be requested, again, the warranty deed and so forth. Then click on the start upload button to upload those files. Here you would provide a description for the uploaded file, for instance, warranty deed. Here you would need to select if you are the requester, then you provide your signature because you have to e-sign your application. The last step for the county is to pay, obviously. So you have to select your payment method. You can either pay by credit card or you can pay with a check. Once you submit, so now you've completed the submission process. Once you submit, you will receive a, uh, determination of, in a few weeks. Typically it takes three weeks for it to be processed by Broward County for the wetland determin- uh, delineation. And it will be mailed to the requester. And they will receive a sample, uh, response, a sample, uh, email or PDF file that includes this, this type of letter within it. Okay? Upon receipt of the wetland delineation, they need to now move to step three, which is the application to the town. So you've received your wetland delineation from Broward County. Your next step in the process is to apply with the Town of Southwest Ranches. So here, uh, the Southwest Ranches fill permit application can be obtained from the town's website. And this is what the application looks like. You will complete page one of the town application as well as sign page two, which is required to be notarized and notaries are provided in-house by town staff. We have notaries on, on hand. Here you will also need to upload, uh, the sketch. We, um, it's requested that you submit the, uh, aerial that's provided by the, by Broward County for the wetland delineation. As you can see in this particular example, uh, they sent back, um, the delineation for this particular parcel. And it shows that the lower half, the southern portion of this parcel is essentially all wetland. The green area there shaded is, 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 um, identified as a wetland. So I, on here, you would need to identify, either by handwriting or, uh, manipulating the document, where it is that you intend to, uh, bring the fill in onto the property. And indicate on there and upload that document. Or submit that document. So that's step three. So you've made application now to the town. It's now turned in to the, um, to, to the town staff along with the wetland delineation from Broward County. And at that point, our town staff will review it, make sure that everything is in order and, uh, the permit will be approved. Upon permit approval, an email notification will be sent to the requester. And then a fill permit sign is, is issued. And that, and the Requester will need to retrieve the permit sign from Town Hall. The fill permit sign should be placed in a visible location on the owner's property near the location where the fill will be placed. The fill permit approval is valid for 60 calendar days. Should additional time be needed, please request an extension before the expiration date. Also, we ask that you notify the town when work is complete so the fill permit sign can be retrieved by a town representative. So final notes on the process. Please note that the process outlined herein is for a Level One fill permit only. For a Level Two or Level Three fill permit, approvals from either Central Broward or South Broward will be required. Refer to the fill permit packet for further details for applying for a Level Two or Level Three fill permit. And we request that if you have any additional questions about the process, to please contact the town's Public Works Department at the main number for Town Hall, which is 954-434-0008. Again, this presentation will be uploaded to the town's website.
Thank you, thank you, Russell. And as you can see, we went through this. It is quite detailed. We did a lot of going back to figure out what we just did and then moving forward. There was a lot of back and forth. Russell spent a great deal of time with Rod's help, uh, answering questions. And we, it, it is a process. And we figured out if you follow this, it's like a 15-minute process. If you, instead of a several hours and weeks. I also will mention that, um, I had a, uh, wetlands inspection by Broward County, physical inspection when they were out there. The results were actually completed within a three-day timeframe. And four weeks later, I had to email them and ask them what's up. And they apparently, an honest mistake, they emailed it to the wrong individual. And I had been patient. I didn't want to, you know, just let, let it go and see, see what the flow was. And, and just, just now got it a few days ago. So we just finally put the whole package together. So I would say that after a week or two, if you haven't heard back from Broward County, there, there might be a reason like somebody sent it to the wrong, wrong person. Just, you know, hey, hey, where are we at? You know, that kind of. So, and it's all done by email. It's, 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 it, once you do, once you know what you need to do next, it's all very simple. But when you're un, and it's unknown, it's very frustrating. I, I can tell you that. Um, this, uh, the wetlands determination is for two years. So what I would do is, um, I would plan on doing two Level Ones, uh, because you only need to go back to the town for the second one because you already have, uh, you know, and after 12 months. So I would have a Plan A and a Plan B, and then Plan B would institute that after the, the first, uh, the first year, taking advantage of the wetlands designation. Because you can, and you have to reapply, um, a, after, uh, two years. All the stuff from Broward County can be done at home. You don't have to go anywhere, do anything. We did it with, with one of my credit cards and, and all of that and it, and all email transactions. So it was, uh, it was, it was painless and seamless from that point of view. It's just you got to go through a lot of steps to get to that part. A, as Russell said, we're putting this on the website as a tutorial so that code can point to it. We can point to it. Staff can point to it. Anybody can point to it. Follow this. And unless something changes within Broward County or our system, and you know, we can make those adjustments on the fly, you should be able to, to get a Level One permit with, without any, without too much difficulty. And, uh, one thing I want to mention, uh, from Russell that, um, the, we have to have the town permit, the signature notarized. There's no charge for that here at the town. There's no, nothing here has any charge. You're given the sign. You just have to come pick it up, uh, and, and place it. There's no charge for that. Nothing that has to happen with the town has a charge attached to it. So, uh, it, it, just want to emphasize that to everybody out there. So we're trying, we're really, uh, me in particular, are really trying to make this as consumer-friendly as I can get it. And obviously you see what we went through with, uh, Broward County for five weeks now to get to this point. And now it's, you know, it's streamlined and I'm sure I could see Debbie shaking her head because I know she went through this and, uh, and she, and she didn't have the benefit of having Russell and Rod next to her to, oh no, go back, go do this, try this, or that, you know, that sort of thing. So hopefully everybody will use this, uh, in the future, you know, and, uh, if it is, I'll be a happy camper, you know, because I, we've streamlined the process, you know, for doing that, you know. So, and I'll wrap it up with that, Mayor.
Yeah, that's awesome. I really appreciate you doing that and walking through that process. I think this is something that, um, we need to get the word out, you know, because there's a lot of confusion about, uh, you know, different, you know, different, uh, what, the different fill, uh, levels and what it, you know, which, when, when do you need what and the whole, whole process. And really this is a great job of kind of simplifying it and getting it out in front of the residents and so, awesome. Yeah.
Your timing couldn't be better, Gary. I got to file for a Level Three. 30 years in our house, the muck is, for the most part, gone away or eroded into the pond. I had Lee out there, 20 loads of fill probably. So it isn't even the money. This is what worries me more than, yeah, yeah.
Level Two and Level Three, you have, then, then you have to go to the Broward, to the Water District.
Right.
That's the only, that's the extra step.
I've been flipping through the online piece as you were talking. Thank you.
Yeah. So David, you had your hand down.
Uh, Councilmember Jablonsky, um, can you share with us the amount that Broward County charged?
$35.
Oh, great.
Up, up to two acres. And then if you're over two acres, it's $30 more.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and it's good for two years. So plan it, plan it accordingly because you don't have to go back the second time. You've already got it. You know, I wish it was longer because then you can, you know, keep doing it. But it's, it's a, it's a calendar year from your first, your first application, the first one. And then 12 months later, you can apply for another one with the town. So just want to mention that.
Great. Awesome. Very good. All right, um, legal comments.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be brief. One thing about what Councilmember Jablonsky said is, um, Broward County has full control over this process. The town attempted several times, including recently, to take away Level Ones from Broward County, to tell them we could do it ourselves. They, uh, adamantly refused to give over jurisdiction, uh, but I want to let everyone know that we have tried. Two other factors that, that I should state for what Councilmember Jablonsky said. If you need to go through this process, which, you know, is, is a lengthy time process to do, uh, only do it in the dry season. Because I can tell you that if you wait till the summer, you will get killed. And that leads to my third point. And that is, uh, five years ago or so, maybe 10 years ago or so, the old CCA property, uh, when it was surrounded by the women's prison, the dump and, and the landfill, the landfill and the other prison site, recorded zero jurisdictional wetlands. Okay, none on that site at all. And we have a map showing none on that site at all. Since all the properties developed around it, they've been using that site as the dumping ground for their, their rainwater. So when Broward County went out there to assess the jurisdictional wetlands, they said, um, 80% of this site is wetlands now. So it really does make a major difference when you have them go out and look at your property, uh, depending, you know, where you are in the season for whatever reason that is. That leads me to my fourth point about that property. And that is the current, uh, P3, uh, tenant, uh, contract tenant on that site is up to their end of their, uh, due diligence period on that site. They still have not received governmental approvals. We are at a point in time where in the next, uh, 30 days, the council could make a decision to essentially terminate that agreement. If the council determines that it wishes to terminate the agreement because they have not received government approvals yet, uh, we would have to pay them their costs of getting governmental approvals. They gave us a delineation, uh, this week, I think, Andy, of what they believed that those costs were because I said I was going to bring it back to the council. And 90% of the costs on their list had nothing to do with governmental approvals for the actual, uh, vegetative processing that we were seeking to do there. They included in their list the license plate camera, the P3 submittal fee, all the legal work in negotiating our contract and otherwise, none of which are government approvals. Of the governmental approvals, it was Miller leg engineering with a small fee for actually processing the government approvals. And, and that I would believe would be a governmental approval and probably one we would have needed regardless of who would take the property in order to process through, uh, the environmental issues. So in the next couple of weeks, um, you know, uh, Andy will meet with you one-on-one and then we can discuss publicly, uh, so that you all can communicate with each other, what you want to do, uh, on that site if we want to elect to terminate and just pay, uh, for Miller legs time. You may continue with them afterward, you know, so it's not like money being not spent. Sorry, Vice Mayor.
Keith, weren't we supposed to start receiving revenue right about now?
We are. So that, that's why the contract says that within a year, if they have not received government approvals and if we don't want to give them additional time to receive those government approvals, we can terminate the agreement and pay them the termination fee, which is a reimbursement of the amount they spent to get governmental approval. So, uh, Andy, you may recall the, it was 20-something thousand, I think. I, I don't remember.
You know, I don't recall the number.
Right.
And I apologize, Council. This is something I would have liked to have covered with you in your, in our individual meetings this week. Keith didn't get the information until late yesterday. He and I didn't get a chance to speak about it.
Oh, absolutely. And that's why I said we're going to talk about this further, but I wanted to announce it publicly because we are at that stage where you all get to make a decision if you want to recapture, uh, that property. So.
So they're in breach and we'd have to pay their government approvals, whatever their sunk costs.
They're, they're not in breach. The, the agreement states specifically that if at the end of their one-year due diligence period, if they have not yet received governmental approvals, although they have continued to try to do so and they claim they have tried to do so, that we can either elect to A, allow them to continue and there's a timeframe for them to continue to do so, or B, we can terminate and pay their costs for the government approval. So they're not yet in breach, but they're in the, the situation where you're now in your right of termination period if you wish to terminate.
I believe we approved that October the 8th last year.
Correct. So Council, Councilmember.
Hey Keith, um, do we know when they began the, uh, the effort to get the government approval? Because if they've just started within the last 60 days, you know, that, that's really, lack of a better word, lazy on their part.
I, I don't believe it was. I, I don't believe it was within the last 60 days, but I believe they waited a considerable amount of time before seeking them. They claimed COVID delays. That's their, you know, what they're stating. But again, they acknowledge the fact that the contract is clear, that we have the right to terminate at this time, should the council deem.
And as a follow-up, as a follow-up, what they claim would be a, a fee to get the government approval, and what you're saying, would that constitute an expert opinion that we may need?
No, I, I mean, the, the contract says, it defines government approval as saying whatever is needed to actually get the vegetative debris processing center on the site. Clearly, license plate readers in the submission of a P3 has nothing to do with putting a waste process center on the site. So, yeah, listen, as you know, anyone can litigate anything, so anything's possible. What the good news is that occurred this week, and it literally just happened a day ago, is they actually set forth all of their levels of what they were claiming, you know, they're owed. So at least we know the finite cap that they potentially, you know, could, could claim, even though I, I see no risk in this, we at least now know the finite cap on this.
Good job, good job in defining that.
Right. And that's why we were going back and forth to get this done. So at this point in time, Andy, we'll meet with you on your one-on-ones, and this leads to the last point of the conversation, that as you all are aware, we had a difficult time with the court in the, the CCA Pines matter. It was akin to going to a UFC fight, getting into the ring, and the referee saying, now tie your hands behind your back and, and go. So it was a very difficult venture for, you know, over a week. There was clear issues involved in this case. So many issues that I, I'm pleased to tell you that Pines is still reaching out to Andy in good dialogue to see if the matter can be resolved still today, because I believe they acknowledge certain things that happened at trial as well, and they would like to see finality at some point as well. We will continue proceeding with the post-judgment motions to protect the town. It also continues the ability for Andy to have the necessary dialogue that he's having with them to figure out what all of our next moves are. But at some point, when Andy gets back in town, and there's no rush on this, we would like to call a meeting, not a shade meeting, just a, a workshop discussion on both that item, so you all can discuss openly where you see the future, and as well as we can discuss the P3 at that point. So probably in the next two to three weeks, we would like to just sit down an hour, one day of the week, with you to go through those two specific issues. So I just want to give you a brief update, and we look forward to setting that meeting and discussing more.
Another follow-up, another follow-up, if I may, Mayor, regarding the CCA property. Was the, the 99-year leasing, wasn't there an agreement somehow they were supposed to pay the town $100,000 or something like that?
They were supposed, they are technically supposed to start payment, as Councilmember, as Vice Mayor Hartman said, I believe in November.
Okay.
So, so that's why it's at this point that they're saying, are you going to grant our extension, or are you going to terminate us? So that's why it's important for us to meet and decide how we wish to proceed.
Right. Thank you.
Sorry, Andy, I gave you a lot to follow.
I'm just a little skeptical about the, the whole thing.
Yeah.
You're up, Andy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a few things, and I'll be very brief. I do want to give you all an update on the traffic signal improvements at Sheridan and Volunteer. As you know, the town of Davie was reaching out to their associations within the Ivanhoe community. They've got a meeting scheduled in November to circle back and, and meet with their associations to get some feedback from them, and Davie was kind enough to extend an invitation to me to attend that meeting. So there seems to be some mix within those communities. Some seem to like the improvements, some seem to, to not be in favor. Obviously, the town is opposed to that left turn signal for, for east, eastbound Sheridan onto Volunteer. We'll see where Davie is with it at that point, and hopefully, our, our interests will be aligned, but I'll keep you posted on that. The Code hearing, which was scheduled for.
If I can just make a quick comment on that. We certainly, you know, we certainly would love to have Davie be in alignment with us, and we certainly would love to partner with them and to make sure this doesn't happen. But I want to be clear that whether we get that alignment or not, we're committed to doing everything we can to ensure that this never happens.
Their town administrator and I have had, you know, in a number of discussions as we touch base on other things as well. So whatever happens with it, they, they, they know firmly where we stand.
Right.
And, and our position will not change.
If I may, on that issue, Andy, one concern that I expressed last night to Sunshine Ranches is I periodically, I'm, I'm early morning getting out of here, and I have seen where there's been a traffic accident on 75, and that causes traffic to divert. I can only envision a traffic accident southbound on 75, forcing all that traffic that's heading southbound to cut right through Volunteer Road, and that will be a nightmare for not only our residents, but for those residents of Davie. And that needs to be communicated to Davie, because, you know, people are going to say, okay, divert to Flamingo. I really don't see that as a viable option when people are rushing to get north, they're going to take the easiest route, Flamingo, once that turn lane is opened up.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. You're right. And we see that now with accidents on 75, whether it's north or south, you'll see some of that traffic divert over to Dykes.
Right.
We don't want Volunteer to become Dykes. So I, I understand your point. So thank you. Code hearing, which was scheduled for next Tuesday, unfortunately, our magistrate had a conflict that came up. He will not be able to be here, so Code is in the process of scheduling the, the cases that were scheduled for November 2nd will be rescheduled for Tuesday, November 16th. The magistrate was available the following week, but it didn't give us time to do the notifications. So I just want to give you all a heads up that Code hearing will be held on the 16th. Here's an interesting development. A few short weeks ago, a recent meeting, you all approved the contract for the guardrails along Hancock Road. Well, we sent the notice to proceed to the vendor, and they promptly went out of business. They had not started work, we have not issued them a check. So we're, we're in the process of, of moving on to number two. Number two is a little bit more expensive. Keith and I have had a conversation, he's looking at now at whether we go after the bond that was posted by number one for the difference in cost. So we're exploring that option, so there, there won't be additional, additional cost to the town. But there is a slight delay in that project as we move on from vendor one to vendor two. I just want to give you all a heads up on that.
Is there, is there any sort of a deadline on, on the completion of that project that we, we have to have it done by?
I would have to defer to public work staff, but it hasn't been brought to my attention that we have an issue at this point.
Okay.
Generally, the, the state is, is fairly generous with the time. It, it is a project that goes very quickly once it's underway. So we should be okay from that standpoint. And I'm, I see, heads nodding yes, I think we're good. If we have an issue, obviously, I'll get back to you and let you know. And last but not least, just, I want to just say to you all publicly, as Representative Bartleman was here, we've prepared our, our requests, our, our asks for the state legislature for the coming year. Just want to let you all know that, that we will continue to work with Southern Group, which is Nelson Diaz and Company, who's, who's really done an outstanding job for us in the past. His office has, has established a really good working relationship already, last year with Representative Bartleman's office, and, and certainly, we hope to be successful, but I just want to let you know, we, you know, we, we do plan on using them again for the coming year. They're appropriately connected in Tallahassee, they've done right by the town, and we'll continue that relationship. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, Andy.
Mayor, if I may. Andy, I have a question for you, and I forgot to ask you this in our, in our one-on-one meeting. I've said it now at numerous, at a couple of HOAs, and I, I finally, somebody asked me the question, what, and it deals with the stormwater management grant that we got planned, and where we have to change our procurement code. Nobody asked me what we had to change until the other night, somebody asked me that, and I didn't have an answer. And I was just wondering, is this something we need to meet on, or we need to?
We are in the process of updating our procurement code. That's been through several stages of review, review from, from procurement, from department directors, through finance, through legal. We are getting ready to bring that to you. So, so the council will need to approve the new procurement code. The last time that was really updated formally was, I think, back in 2012. I think I attended a meeting after you had hired or agreed to hire me, but before I had started, and we had a workshop in council chambers where we discussed some of the changes made to that procurement code. It needs to be updated. There are some federal guidelines, some other things that have changed that, that we need to capture and reflect. So that will be coming before you, if not November, probably December.
Okay. And I apologize for not bringing it. I must have had a senior moment.
No problem.
When we were on the one-on-one, and it was on my list. Thank you.
One other note, just want to wish you a wonderful vacation, Andy. Well-deserved and slightly delayed, and please send our apologies and best wishes to Melissa, that we appreciate her, her patience and enjoy.
The good news is the changing of the leaves seems to be running a little bit behind.
Awesome.
Because if I, if I get to Asheville on Saturday and the leaves have fallen, I'm going to hear about that for all, all week.
We'll all hear about it. So we're hoping for that it all goes well.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Item number 10, resolution.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting and approving a grant agreement in the amount of $250,000.0 with the State of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity federally funded community development block grant mitigation program to develop a town-wide stormwater master plan, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Do I have a motion on this?
Speak of the devil, make a motion to approve.
Second. Awesome. Awesome. This is, this is a great item. We've been looking for this item for, since we've been a town.
Yep.
And, and the work once again of the staff to get the funding for this is tremendous, and this is a major component to really getting the drainage where it needs to be for our town. It's critical to have the plan in place so that when any development gets done, properties are improved or changed or whatever, that we can have a plan and know how to direct the flow of the water and where that, where that should be. So this is a huge step forward. Good team effort, really appreciate it. It's important. Any comments on this item?
Yeah, I did have a question for Andy that he just gave me a thing in my ear that he's got an answer. I was wondering if we couldn't factor into the grant money, you know, assuming we have extra left over, some amount for paying for our own staff. I know when I was with FDOT and we would get grants for various things, we would always include our staff costs in the grant request. So if that's an opportunity, it would be a great way to recoup some of the money. I have a feeling Rod's going to be very busy on this.
Rod is a busy guy.
The good news is we get to hire somebody to do this. The grant does allow for up, up to 5% for administrative override. So depending on how those bits come in, obviously, if there's a, a chance to, to recoup some of that out of the grant, we, we'll, we'll look to do that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Great. Great idea. All right. Is there any public comment on this item?
Newell Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. When this design goes forward, there has been a lot of work by the Drainage Board over the years, and the exact reason it was formed was this, where people have come forward and said, this is what's wrong in our area. There is lots and lots of information, maps, everything. And I remember they existed when Willie was here, which was before our present one engineer. They existed then because they were in his office. They should still exist. Those resources need to be made part of any engineering study and design that they put I myself went out and found the drainage system that's on 195, 196, and went to Willie, and I showed him. Here they are, all clogged up, closed over, and many places, there was nothing but grass. But what's, was the indication that they were there was this little piece of asphalt disappearing into the grass. Willie had them all cleaned out, and now there's a drainage system that works on 195 and 196. And then we put forward the extension into the park in three phases, and that took another 10 years. And it was on my orphan list for many, many years until it finally got done. Those parts of the community that have put forth effort through the Drainage Board and through their individual efforts, and the town was made aware of, need to become parts of this, so they don't do something which is going to say, well, we're only going to make it worse because we've already defined that the water doesn't run that direction. Like on 199th, from the canal that is south of me to my house, the water runs to me on both sides of the street. That's why we had, when John Monroe lived here, before he moved up to Citrus County, we called it Lake Monroe across the street at his house, similar to the Steve Bray Cruz Lake. And then my yard, which floods continuously, and I've been working with the town for many years on that, and I've broken several teeth gnawing on nails. But those items need to be incorporated into this document, so we don't make the stupid mistakes that I'm sure an engineer is going to make. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Any other public comment on this item? Yeah, Mary Ann?
Mary Ann, Mary Ann Allen, 12701 Mustang Trail. Having been here for 30 years, I've sure seen my share of floods in the area, and having attended many South Florida Water Management Drainage Meetings, and realizing that a lot of developers were appointed to that board, and when they were developing Weston and Pembroke Pines and everything, they made us the retention area and calling us wetlands. Well, the areas that they developed were wetter than ours, but suddenly, there are subdivisions and they're built up, and they've got driveways and asphalt, and we don't have the water draining where it used to drain. It drains into Southwest Ranches. Last year, we had the worst flood ever that I've seen in 30 years. We were flooded with Wilma, where I saw, you know, boats were going down the streets. That's all that could maneuver on our streets was boats, and being trapped in my house for almost a week where I couldn't get out. Engineers, let's talk about Dallas. They were so flooded, you remember, a few years ago, people had to be rescued. Well, they developed so much around that particular city that there was nowhere for the water to go, and it flooded. What could go wrong with engineers? Salzburg, never flooded in Austria for 400 years. They flooded, they were swept away, 150 people died. So when you're considering drainage and redoing areas, it's really important because people's lives are at stake, animal lives are at stake when we flood. So it is an important project for you to consider. And as Newell said, we've attended all these meetings for 30 years, we've given our input, and that shouldn't be lost. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mary Ann. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Russell, if you can please call the question.
One comment, one comment. I, I just ask that we disregard Newell's derogatory term stupid mistakes by engineer. A mistake is a mistake. Just like to ask that we just ignore that word stupid. Thanks.
Got it. Thank you. Russell.
Councilmember Albrit? Yes. Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bray Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 11, please.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting and approving an agreement with KLS contractors in the amount of $770,146.0 to complete the Broward County Surtax-funded transportation surface drainage and ongoing rehabilitation of Southwest 196 Lane, Southwest 199th Avenue, Southwest 201st Terrace, Southwest 202nd Avenue, Southwest 48th Street, Southwest 48th Place, Southwest 49th Court, Southwest 50th Place, and Southwest 50th Manor, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 town budget, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
It's my neighborhood.
Any council discussion on this item? Any council discussion on this item? Seeing none, any public comment on this item? Seeing none. I would like to make one comment. The, these items that we're looking at, you know, we just talked about two hundred and fifty thousand, this one is seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, next one is eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars and three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. This totals up to two point, over two point two million dollars, these projects. And the thing about it is, I mean, bear in mind, what is, what is our, our ad valorem revenue, seven, eight million dollars if I remember right, somewhere in there, I think around eight million? That's all right, it's right around there, trust me. It's in that neighborhood. This is, this is two, over, more than two point two million and not a penny of it is coming out of our ad valorem taxes or the fees or anything like that. It's all coming out of grants and, and, and all those things that we've applied for from different agencies to get this funding in place. The penny sales tax, all of this is coming together. We have a tremendous staff that does an unbelievable job that provides these funds so that these projects can move forward. And we are really fortunate, I just want people to know that we are really fortunate to have the folks that we have to get this job done because our town is being transformed in a positive way. Better drainage, safer, the guardrails, all those types of things, repaving the roads, all the things that need to be done are getting done because we, the funding that is, that's made available. So this is awesome and we really appreciate the work that's being done there. Thank you all. All right, Russell, if you can please call the item.
Certainly Mayor. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bray Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Item number twelve, please.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting and approving an agreement with Weekly Asphalt Paving Inc. in the amount of eight hundred and eighty thousand, ninety-one dollars and thirty cents to complete the Broward County Surtax-funded transportation surface drainage and ongoing rehabilitation of Southwest one twenty-eighth Avenue, Southwest one thirtieth Avenue, Southwest one thirty-third Avenue, Southwest one thirty-fifth Avenue and Southwest one thirty-sixth Avenue. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item?
Jablonsky.
Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Russell, please call the question.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bray Cruz?
Yes.
You know, this is, this is four years' worth of funding. Two projects in one year.
I know, it's, this is amazing, I mean, we, Vice Mayor Hartman just made a comment which is, is really important that, you know, we had set aside five hundred thousand dollars a year out of our ad valorem taxes to do Tisdor. What we just approved here is three times that amount and not a penny of it came out of our ad valorem taxes. So, very awesome. All right, item number thirteen, please.
Item number thirteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving a single source agreement with Vetted Security Solutions Inc., also known as VSS for the installation of a townwide license plate reader system. Approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget for machinery and equipment. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to execute a purchase order in an amount not to exceed three hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred dollars and zero cents and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Very good. Any comments from the council on this item?
Yeah, I have one on this. I want to draw your attention to location number five. Most of the locations of, of the camera configurations look fine, they're in relatively obscure places. This one, I'm, I'm wondering if we can't move it to the other side of the street or move it down closer to a driveway or the other because it seems like there'll be a pole and some license plate readers directly in front of these people's front door. You look at it on the left. I'm, I'm sure we can do something to take it out of that specific location.
You talking about on one seventy-second?
Yeah.
Am I reading the right one?
Uh, yeah. Location five, it says at the top.
One second.
So yeah, if that can either go to the other side of the street or one side of the other, it wouldn't be, like I said, it's right in front of their front door. So.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's a power issue involved with that.
I'm sure it could go left or right or north or south. Yeah, I would agree to go into the other side of the street, they may have to do some horizontal boring or something along those lines, but if they--
Well, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just kind of wondering, you know, what's the rationale?
Hello, I'm Johnny from Vetted Security Solutions today. So I'm here and I can help answer some of these questions if there is any other ones as well as that one. I do believe that the reason why that one was located there just due to the amount, the cost involved with moving power around. So I do believe we can easily move it north or south, just not under the roadway to the other side of the road.
Sure, I figured that, yeah.
So I, I don't see that being too much of an issue at all. I'll need to go look over the site specifically just to make sure, but I don't see it being a big problem at all.
Great, great.
Awesome.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Vice, Vice Mayor, if I can just add to that, to his point, the locations that were indicated here are not to the, you know, basically to the, to the inch of where it's going to end up being. These were proposed locations, we have some, you know, we have some, some leeway there about moving them, so certainly we'll try to accommodate that.
Perfect.
And all of these were, all, that always is taken into account whenever someone's involved with their yard and house aesthetics. So we would definitely make sure that it would be the best looking possible way of having that wall still have the same outcome of security.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions for the vendor? Appreciate you stepping up.
Yeah, thank you. I have one more for, for us. So we have, I think our pilot has gone very well and I'm enthusiastic about putting these, these license plate readers throughout town. I think it's a great idea. And if it, you know, captures five guys a month, that's good enough for me. I'm sure we can do better than that. But when these were first installed and we started asking questions of the Davie PD folks that come to our meetings, I didn't get a comfort level that everybody was fully engaged with the new technology that we installed, that all the PD that, that monitor our town were watching it, et cetera. And we're making a huge investment here and we can have a lot of legitimate hits. I want to make sure that there's some accountability from Davie's management that they're going to, you know, make sure that their, their team out here is, is utilizing this technology and, and following up on the leads because, I mean, there could be five hits come in within ten minutes, it's a car driving across town or we got five bad guys here at the same time. I want to make sure that they have some procedures in place that they are handling this and, and they're, they're going to deal with it properly. I don't know what properly is, I'm not a police officer, but, you know, it, it concerns me that we make this major investment and the money is kind of not maximized.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, I think that's a great point. Andy, you have some thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'll bring you, I'll, I'll bring you all up to speed. Vice Mayor and I had this conversation yesterday and he expressed that concern to me, so I, I'm not hearing it for the first time. I've already had a conversation with Davie Police Chief, Steve Kinsey, and he'll be here at our next meeting on November eighteenth. So I think you, when he was originally hired, I think you all met him really via Zoom. So he hasn't been here for an in-person meeting, so I wanted to have him come out anyway, but I've already given him a heads up that, that you have some concerns on this so that he'll come in prepared to, to discuss this very topic at that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, great. Awesome. I also want to just do a quick call out. Councilmember Jablonsky, thank you for all your work on this. I know this was your, kind of your--
Team effort.
You started it, but it is a team effort, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, this is a, what, once, once this gets installed and proper utilization as, as Vice Mayor pointed out and Davie PD gets used to doing it, because I think they're going to have multiple hits because this is, this is bracketing the town, you know, all four corners and in the middle. Word is just going to get out that this is not the place to go if you're, you're going to commit a crime. I mean, that's, it, the, that type of news amongst that community or, or that culture travels very, very quickly. And if you're being, if we're, if the cars are being tracked, you know, mailbox thefts, car thefts, robberies, you know, all of that, I really see that we're going to be a, a very safe community and, and I, I can't think of anything negative, you know, coming out of this, you know. Especially with our policies in place that, that we have to protect our, our citizens. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping we have unanimous vote on this. There's a lot of effort's been put into this, so.
All right. Great, seeing no other comment, I think we're good. Oh, oh, thank you Noel. Yeah. Is there any public comment on this item? Go ahead.
Noel Hollingsworth, one hundred and ninety-ninth Avenue. As to what Gary was saying that, you know, word gets out, but there is no vaccine for stupid, so anyway. What I really wanted to say was that the dollar amounts that we have gotten on this here shows the quality of our staff. And I don't think that was reiterated enough tonight. Normally, we have a two hundred thousand dollar or a fifty thousand dollar grant. Tonight, we're talking about, what was it, one point two million dollars?
Two point two.
Two point two. And I'd like to thank Russell for finding his big ears, hearing something and passing it along to Emily, who I believe is one of the finest grant writers in South Florida because every year, the staff with Emily puts together a package and we get money that I had no idea we would ever get or believe that we should get or believe that, you know, it's even possible for us to get. But we do it year after year after year from the state, from the federal government, from the county, from the penny tax, over and over and over. And I'd like to say thank you to all of the staff and Russell and Emily for being such high-quality individuals and work so hard for our town.
Very good, absolutely. All right, I think we're ready.
Noel, the check's in the mail, thank you.
Counsel, Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bray Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great job.
Was that unanimous enough for you Gary?
Yep. Works for me when everybody says yes.
All right, item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida entering into an agreement with Broward County Supervisor of Elections,